Thanks. If that's good for money.
Yeah, right.
Are we on? Okay, it is Tuesday, March 29th, 2022. Call and mean to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any minutes or reports received and filed?
No.
Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Must be end of the month, not a whole lot going on. I think we have Eastside Business Association meeting Friday morning. At least that's on my calendar, April Fool's Day, so. I won't be here soon. Got the Cattlemen's Dinner Saturday night in Lawrenceville. That's about it for this week, a light week.
Same here, light week. A meeting with Eric, Public Works, about an issue to be discussed on Friday. That's it.
That's it, okay. I got all kinds of me. I get to meet with one of our city council candidates tomorrow, and then I'm meeting with some citizens on Thursday. Saturday is the heart wall, although I got a conflict there with the National Guard, so we'll see. Okay, that's all I've got. Any commission comments? Bids and contracts? Unfinished business? New business? Accounts payable review?
There is none at this time.
Good job, Debbie. Little Debbie.
It's Chelsea.
First read. Okay. Now, we have a little more decorum here, and Brian's got a sport coat on today, so we need more decorum.
He needs to shop just off.
Yeah. Okay, first reading of budget adjustment number one.
Okay, this is for EMA. It's for $11,998, and it's for a grant.
Okay.
No action today?
No. Okay. Approval of the VMware renewal.
Debbie, number six. So, so this is our, our platform that we run, the county server, some of the county servers on. It's just a maintenance renewal. It's a budgeted item, and I would just want to let you know this is under contract. It's $3,054.45, and I would ask that that be spent. Got any questions? I'd be happy to take them.
You got the contract?
I do.
Jill, review it?
Yes.
Okay. Funny how that works.
We had the issue yesterday morning. Yeah?
All right, make motion. We renew the voicemailware with VMware with SHI.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Signing of opioid settlement MOU.
Okay, this is to sell the opioid litigation. This is for the distributors and Johnson &amp; Johnson, and they cut a settlement with the AG, the state, and our requirement was that we have to negotiate and get a certain percentage because he wasn't going to give political subdivisions any of that money. And so that worked, so we get 40%.
We get 40% of what?
Of the total amount of the settlement with the distributors and J&amp;J with the state.
Who's "we"?
Cole County.
Based upon?
The, the counties get 40%.
Okay, Cole, the counties get 40%?
Right, and then we get our proportion.
Proportion of share?
Yes.
Based on population, or how's that?
Well, they have a calculation of what the opioid epidemic has caused.
Yeah, I'm just looking at how they determined our share. First of all, the counties receive 40%.
Right, they determine our share based on their calculations of what the opioid epidemic has caused Cole County.
Okay.
And I don't have any idea how they calculated that, but they have some kind of formula.
They is the AG's office?
No, the, um, our attorney's.
Okay.
Is this, Christie, did y'all have something to do with this at all? Health Department didn't? So, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how they know what we spent on it.
Jeff, there's some national formula that, you know, there's tons and tons of lawyers on this.
We actually gave a condition on that.
Yeah, we did, we did answer interrogatory.
So we should get to money?
Well, I'm not questioning what, who's "we" there, yeah.
This year.
You mean Cole County? Right, we agree with you.
This is a development that, we just talked about this, one of the things that, that has come about is with the states doing away with their Narcan program. First responder agencies are expending large amounts of money to purchase Narcan to give to people. So I would suggest that whatever funds we do reserve, we set those funds aside to support the Narcan program for all counties, for two hundred.
And it'll, it'll come with what you can, you can spend us on. That's part of the court order, and I suspect, and it, and it's for opioid-related programs, so I suspect you would be able to do that. And any programs out of the Health Department related to that, but we'll see when we get our money.
So when did the states stop providing Narcan?
Um, it's in the, yeah, a couple months ago. We would get it through the mobile program, and we would distribute to fire department, highway patrol, sheriff's department, and we were kind of the keeper of it, but they stopped providing it through that program. And we gave what we had left over in our cash to the sheriff's department.
Okay.
So we still don't know what we're getting. We get a percentage of a percentage.
And I'm not questioning, really, I guess what I'm, I'm just curious is to see that Cole County is treated fairly compared to the other counties, because at some point the counties are getting this bucket of money, and how did that bucket get allocated between the counties, not necessarily what came to the state? That's already been determined.
That, that's allocated by what our calculated costs from the opioid epidemic.
It, it must have something to do with the size of the county, population-wise, I would think.
Well, that probably weighs into it, because the more people you have, the more it costs you.
Well, some of the poorer counties may have more of a problem in the ratio of their people per problem.
They may, but I don't know.
That may be the way they figure it.
I don't know how you measure that, though.
Because we get screwed on the cart funding, too.
Part of it is what the information that we gave on the Narcan that we utilized down there, so I think that made the part of the formula.
We did, yeah, I did, did do interrogatories that I filled out with the assistance of Christie, John, and Matt. Actually, I think Stephen was the one who helped me, but, and then I submitted that in. But we have our litigation counsel.
Okay.
And...
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to sign the opioid settlement MOU.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the counties that have not, that did not participate in this are probably not getting anything.
Right.
It's only those counties that are...
Well, there's less than half of the counties participated in that, right?
I'm sorry, Jeff.
There was less than half the counties that participated in it, right?
I know for a fact.
There wasn't a large number of them, I think.
So those counties that did participate in that are not going to be getting anything, most likely, so.
And I think Chief Hoy had a good, and maybe the sheriff, a good suggestion that we, we see what this number is, and that we, if we've got to start buying the Narcan.
Well, and we'll...
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
We'll need to look, there, when the court settles this, it's going to be restricted to certain uses.
Right.
And I'm guessing that will be fine, but we'll have to look at that when we get it.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
All righty, signing of annual maintenance agreement.
You getting a hot seat again?
Oh, yeah.
Why wear the sport coat?
So the, the annual maintenance agreement is for hardware maintenance for our routers and things like that, so I would ask that, that be signed. It has to do with the security, our, our constant vigil in updating our security envelope for the county, and those devices are critical in nature as far as how they perform and if they're functional or not.
I'm good with it, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the same as the Huber Professional Services Agreement?
It goes with the Huber Professional Services Agreement, yeah.
So, you got the agreement there, then?
Uh, you know, I, I do, I think.
So the annual maintenance agreement is with who?
It's, it's with, it's through Huber, but it's with Cisco. So we use Cisco routing devices at each of our locations, and so that is through Huber, but it is, it is for Cisco.
So, so this, right below that one, then, is signing of the Huber Professional Services Agreement. So we want to do both of those?
Yeah, so in conjunction with both of those, that has to do with actually going through and updating the routers and then to like the latest firmware levels, and then also programming them for the failover communication things I've been talking about with these new added internet features at each location.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is all through contract, through state contract, so.
You got them?
I do.
With all the press on, on our cyber attacks and everything, is some of this...
It's, it's, well, so, just to let you know, we're constantly involved with security briefings and things like that through CISA, which is a federal organization. We're talking to them about, all the time about vulnerabilities, and they're giving us constant updates as far as, we call them bad actors and things like that, so we can kind of help prevent those things. And then, obviously, the number one defense is the, the employee side. So the protection training that we would ask that they do would be, is critical to making sure or to ensuring that we're doing everything we can to keep things from happening. So I, I push that out to the elected officials and also to the department directors that if you're not, if your employees are not doing the training, then they really need to be doing the training, so.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of warnings and stuff. I'm, I'm getting a lot of warnings, too, so, I mean, they're kind of expecting that we are gonna have some, the Russia's gonna retaliate, and...
Right.
I think that's what happened today and yesterday with our, I think it was Putin.
Well, not, not necessarily.
Oh, well.
Which one of these is the Cisco maintenance agreement?
I think it's the $6,900 one, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm good. All right, make a motion to sign the annual maintenance agreement with Cisco through Huber and Associates.
That's correct.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, make motion to sign the Huber Professional Service Agreement with the policy-based routing configuration.
Correct.
Second.
All in favor?
Before we vote, just, just quick, I can maybe squeeze this question in under this area.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
We, we are here at this place called .org.
Correct.
There's a discussion about us being called .gov.
That's correct.
Where is that discussion?
Okay, so we have actually purchased that domain, so, and I don't even think it was a purchase so much as you sign up for it through the government. And to be quite frank, there's a lot of other things that are going on inside the security process that, that's probably, that's on our list to get done, but just is not at the top of the list right now. But, obviously, there's a lot of discussions that go along with that because, you know, colecounty.org's been around for a long, long time, and so we have to go through and do an impact study and see what all that's gonna, gonna affect and hit before we make that change.
Okay, but if you had your DeLorean with the flux capacitator here and you could go back, you would call us .gov from the get-go?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely, so, yeah.
And we gotta reprint all our business cards.
Oh, yeah, like I said, that's the impact study.
Don't you handwrite yours, anyway?
I sent Osage County a thank you note already.
My handwriting's not good enough after I have the card.
Okay, now, we're calling for the question, right? You said before, we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so with signing of teletask agreement, you're, oh, that's, okay.
Hello, this is a, a software that WIC would like to use to message clients. They have a software right now that is not as user-friendly. This messages people, sort of like when you have an appointment with the doctor, you'll get a text or a phone call reminding you of the appointment. It really has increased our note, or decreased our no-show rate, but this new software allows them to text back, like if they need to change their appointment. It prevents our staff from having to call everyone, so it'll streamline things. Other counties are using this teletask, so we've got some good reviews, and it is fully funded by the WIC contract, so. I have an agreement, and Jill has looked at it.
Yep, I like those kind of programs. They're all on my side today.
Yeah, that's good.
You're doing good.
Yeah.
All right, make motion, we sign the teletask agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we scratched the discussion of updating Fuel Master software, so we will go to discussion of purchasing fuel tank.
Public Works is looking to purchase a fuel tank. They received two quotes, one was from Wallace and Newmeyer. The lowest one we got was from Wallace, which was $10,548.56. This has to go with the, the upgrades with the fuel that they're wanting, that we're getting ready to run RFP for, do a co-op.
Yeah, and this tank specifically is the biodiesel tank that we submitted a grant through the Missouri Agriculture and Agricultural and Small Business Development Authority through Missouri Corporate Agriculture. We received that grant, as we talked about previously. The price that we had included in the grant application was eighty-five, or $8,524, so this new one's about 2,000 higher. I talked to the grant people, and they said we can submit a letter and request additional funds through the grant because there is money available, so we will do that. It's a 50-50 match, so we'll get an additional 1,000 and some change from it. The price hasn't gone up that much since this was originally quoted back in November, middle of November, and actually, it's a different company this time, too, so.
So we have a, something to sign here?
Nothing has gone down.
Except for the size of the packages.
Yeah, I know, isn't that...
A motion to purchase the fuel tank for $10,548.56.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Signing of contract amendment with MODHSS.
Hello, so this is the epidemiology and laboratory capacity contract, and typically when we get these contracts from Department of Health and Senior Services, there's a clause in there saying that we can move our money around between the categories as long as it doesn't exceed 10% of the total contract. Well, apparently with this contract, they left the clause out. So they're sitting as a contract amendment to put the clause in that we can move money around within the categories, which is good because we're moving money around in this one to cover the cost of the generator from a few other things to equipment and other. So, yeah, this basically just says we can move money around as long as it doesn't exceed 10% without a formal contract amendment.
Say she's shared.
I was trying to slide up.
And I was on the bar.
Trying to be fair.
Well played.
You're gonna be sat at the little kids' table Saturday night.
That's corporate.
A motion to sign the contract amendment with MODHSS Program Services Contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signing of federal prisoner contract.
As you know, we had a recent negotiation with the U.S. Marshal Director's, per DM rate, we got it up to $90 a day. I asked that you sign the budget, and then Sam, you have to initially pay it, too.
Hey, I gotta stand now.
I've heard.
What was it, that before, 78?
Yes. Did I write Kristen, 78, Kristen says yes.
So Sheriff, what is the projected increase in revenue to the county? When, when does this become effective, by the way?
I think April 1.
Okay, so from April 1 through 12/31, we're gonna be receiving $90 a day versus 78?
And we also, they up the rate for protecting the prisoners, too, if we have the leave facility to $25 now.
Okay, I'm, I'm really good with that, but here's a question. We, we had a, a budget amendment earlier in this meeting. I've always been sort of a little puzzled by whenever we're overspending the budget, we have to have a budget amendment to make that happen. What happens when we over-collect per the budget? This thing, this, was this number?
The sheriff keeps it.
The sheriff keeps the difference, okay.
So you can court order it in, the court orders, like the one Chelsea read earlier.
Okay.
You can court order that in.
And if you don't?
It just gets carried forward into the next year.
Right, okay.
And to answer your question, it's how much that will be, it depends on how many prisoners they run through, so I have no answer for you.
You've got an idea. I mean, what's, what's the average federal roster?
It increases anywhere from 300 to 500,000 a year.
A year?
Yes.
And this is gonna be two-thirds of a year?
Yeah, so it won't be...
Or actually, three-fourths of a year?
Yeah, so it won't be that much.
Well, it's...
I mean, it won't be as much as what I'm guessing.
Right.
But that's a, that is a...
But your, your, your cost of food is going up. Is that true?
It is, about 3%.
That's not bad.
And our overtime is, of course, depending on vacancies, is going through the roof.
Compared to what we get per day for the state prisoners, is what, $26?
Well, the difference is I get paid every, for every inmate, veteran I have, I get that. For state prisons, I only get paid if they get found guilty of a felony.
And they go to big homes.
If they have to go to prison.
Right.
If they go to prison, I don't get anything.
But even then, you only get a portion.
$26.20 a day.
Which hasn't been raised in 14 years that I know of.
Long time.
Yeah, so.
Are we still paying another county to house our prisoners as we speak?
We currently have 16 sitting at Montotown County Jail.
And what do we pay Montotown for doing that?
Uh, I'm gonna say it was 50, but I'm not sure on that.
So, it still pays us to take in a, a federal and ship out a, a state or a county incarcerated person?
That's correct.
Okay. So do we need a, a motion to, I guess we do need a motion to...
Yeah.
I'll, I'll offer a motion to sign the new contract with U.S. Department of Justice as submitted by Sheriff Wheeler.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I did forget to say that Jill has looked this over as well as Brian.
And I got initial education. I get my stamp.
And safely, Brian, now.
I get my stamp. Signing of Flock Camera MOU Agreement.
So this is a data-sharing MOU with Flock Camera System. State approached me with this program. It's actually LPRs, license plate readers, that they want placed in Cole County on 54 and 50. It's a free program for a year, and after the year, then we can decide if we want to continue it. There's a total, it's a, it's a huge project. It's a total of 25 cameras, but we are only gonna, there's only the eight beside of Cole County for this agreement.
And these are station cameras? They're not cameras that are going on vehicles that are, that are...
That's correct. These are stationary cameras, and not only that, they don't read, they don't read license plate, they read the numbers. For instance, the very first car that I ever bought, the license plate was RJK165. So if my, if there was a stolen vehicle, then I could input RJK165, and it would do two things. One is it would tell me if any of those, any of those license plate readers seen that within this whole project, including, I think there's six counties involved in this. So it would tell me if this vehicle was in any of those six counties, number one. Number two, then, from that point on, it would watch for it. The information is dumped after 30 days, so, it's a roll-in 30 days. So if nobody inputs the information or asks for that particular number, then it just goes away. So the reason why I say that is, this isn't Big Brothers watching you, they're not reading your plates as you go by. This system doesn't have the ability to read a license plate. All it does is you give it some characters, and it looks for those characters, so.
Okay.
You have any questions?
How are you notified?
So there'll be an app placed on our MDTs. The app, then, once you, once you log on to it, then it would tell us if something, once you log on to it, turn it on, then during the day, it would pop up and say stolen vehicle, or we'd be able to track if we're looking for a, a particular person that's muleing, that's bringing in drugs. And, you know, another good example on how this would have helped us, this last shooting, this is the last shooting, the one before, here in Jeff City, the individual did the shooting and then left, and we were looking for him, and he had been known to be out of the county. So we were sending cars over in that area, and PD was looking for this car. If we would have had LPRs at that time, we would have known that the car was already in Columbia, so it left town almost immediately. We wouldn't have had to tie all those resources up. So it's a, it'll save us, I think it's gonna save us twofold. I don't, I'm not opposed to stationary LPRs because to operate a motor vehicle on a public roadway is a...
Privilege.
It's not a right, it's a privilege. So I'm, I'm okay with it doing that. I don't agree with the mobile LPRs, and I won't, I won't do those.
What does Flock stand for?
It's, you have to look at that memorandum, I have no idea. I could make something up, but...
Doesn't matter.
Brian looked at this, too, and said it was okay.
And the first year is, this is of no cost at this time?
Yes, first year is at no cost, and then if we decide, so at the end of the year, we can look at the data that's coming out and see what hits are coming out that, that's working for us. So if we have wanted to stay with only four of those cameras, then we would have to, it's $2,500 per camera per year.
Okay.
So it'd be up to us if we wanted to expand or stay with those numbers.
That's another one question we'll come up with. Just because they're going to dump the information after 30 days, they're not selling it or giving it to anybody else.
No, this information is not...
We've run into this, Christie's probably tired of hearing that question, too.
No, no, I get the same question. No, it's not being sold, the information is...
Because it does say it's not stored, or are stored for no longer than 30 days.
That's correct.
And Flock's just the name of the group, but I don't know if that's an actual acronym or what it is, so, thank you.
That may be, I think that, I think it's actually, when they first started the program, it had something to do with birds, so they just call them flock cameras because it's a bird thing. Sounds...
You make up really good. He's going to Branson.
As far as you know, I'm telling you the truth.
Like a flock of geese?
Yes. Why's it gotta go back to geese?
No, just use that example.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, at the, at some period or interval, will there be somebody in your office that looks back at history to see what plates were asked to find and why, and who asked for it?
So we're, we'll be, we'll be, to be able to get on the system, you get a, a specific username assigned to you, so we can do an audit and find out. Not only can we audit an individual, for instance, I could go in there and, and put John Wheeler in there and see what license plates I looked at, or I could go in there and say, my, I could look at RJK165, and it would tell me who all had wanted to put that number in there, wanted to see, to input that information to find out about it. So it's got a very good audit system.
All right, and then someone would, is someone gonna be assigned to, to review that?
My chief deputy will be in charge of the passwords. I'm hoping he's listening, hey, Bo, you're in charge of this, but anyway, he's gonna be in charge of the, of the system, and he'll be able to do those audits as well as, and change passwords or take people off of there, but you have to have an MDT with the app on there to be able to do this, to use this.
Okay.
Or, let me rephrase that, it could be... Or, let me rephrase that, it could be an iPhone, but we'd have to prove that for us to do it.
So these are stationary cameras set in certain places?
Yes, sir.
It's at eight of them?
I believe there's eight total inside city, inside of Coal County that will be utilized.
Okay, this isn't the ones like they were talking about before on the cars?
No, no, those are mobile, we're not using.
Mark Richardson had one too.
Yeah, thought that was different, so. Okay, so how long is this for, a year then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Be curious to see what comes of it.
Interesting.
I think the key is, is that it's not used inappropriately. If you have a, an employee who's having issues with his significant other and wants to track that significant other through this, it's not, it's not proper. It has to be, that's why you have to, you have somebody assigned to look, why did you ask for this?
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay. Good. Make motion to sign the Flock Camera MOU Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think you have to initial each one too, right?
No, I don't think so.
No, that was just a.
Don't do that, 'cause I thought you were serious.
Okay, and then the signing of independent agreement with case manager, we're moving to next week's agenda per Chelsea. Do we have any other issues? Yes, please.
I wanted to give you a heads up that DHSS has been talking for some time about how we're gonna move, how we are moving out of the pandemic phase of COVID-19 into more of the endemic phase, kinda like we've talked about before. There was always gonna be kind of a background level. So how does surveillance change? How does, you know, case investigations change? How does reporting change? And we've been told for a few weeks that they're gonna make this change April first, but we haven't received any guidance as to what that change is going to be yet. Um, we did hear yesterday that perhaps the governor is thinking about making a formal announcement about what the change will be. So hopefully we'll hear before Friday, 'cause that's when April first is. And then, and we will most likely need to or will change how we're reporting the data on our website as a result of their changes. Because if they're not sending us case information, we won't be able to update our spreadsheet, we won't be able to update our website. You know, we're not sure what the change is going to be, but we anticipate that we will have to change as a result of their change. That makes sense? So, um, we will communicate out what we plan to do once we get guidance from them. And the other thing I was gonna mention is next week is National Public Health Week. So Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services has been interviewing various people to showcase maybe the other side of public health or what everything else public health does besides COVID. So yesterday I did an interview with them, so that'll be on their Facebook pages. And I know they've interviewed other people like Missouri Primary Care Association, Missouri Hospital Association. So those will be good messages hopefully to educate people on everything else we do besides just that one virus investigation, so.
And did DHSS do another testing yesterday at American Legion?
They did one on Sunday. I don't know how many people yet. I don't anticipate that it was very many.
Do we know what our count is right now for Coal County?
What do you mean?
On Coal, our COVID cases or?
Um, last week we had eleven. In the county. Nine of them were breakthrough cases, so nine of them were fully vaccinated.
Okay.
So eleven for the entire week last week. So the numbers are way down. It's good. Really good.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, we haven't figured out, we'll probably do something for staff next week for National Public Health Week, but I don't know.
Yeah, we usually do resolution, don't we?
Yeah, we usually do. Do you mind doing that? I can get it together, although Melody usually does that, so it'll make work with you. Okay, okay.
Want to have a cake or anything?
Pie.
Pie.
We have to have a healthy snack, fruit pie.
Fruit pie.
But Tom's good for you.
Coffee.
Uh-oh.
Maybe we can have a.
Little less positive news. Not a huge deal, we're dealing with it. Thane and Park, we had a pipe collapse, found that out about three weeks ago. Started working on it yesterday, turned out it was burnt. Uh, we think it may have happened with one of the fires out there, but there's no way to know for sure. Could be a totally separate incident, nobody ever knew about it. So because it burnt, eventually it lost its strength and collapsed. It was a plastic pipe that had been added on to a stormwater pipe draining from South Brooks Road through Thane and Park. So we're out there today patching it back together. I would say it would be a pretty good temporary fix. The whole thing may need to be replaced at a later date. The city, they have a sewer holding tank out there for their sewer system out there and they need to replace that and actually expand it. So we may coordinate with them at that time to do the full replacement of the pipe. So this is resulting in having to pay for, bring in a pipe. We had, not special order, but we had to get a plastic to match today. Uh, there's some concrete sidewalk work that has to be done to replace what has been damaged in trying to get in there to restore it. And then looking long-term, maybe more near-term if we can, we'd like to do lighting out there and then possibly security cameras. Uh, there's, John can attest to it, there's a lot of vandalism issues out at that park specifically. Um, I think lighting, specific lighting that is geared towards illuminating the area and not shining up the whole subdivision can be done. And I think it'll deter some issues and then ultimately some security cameras, so.
So we'll get the pipe plate, 'cause they're talking one to two inches of range tomorrow?
It'll be back in functioning today, yes.
Okay, okay.
So.
Refresh my memory if I ever knew about the fire.
Uh, it's been six months. We've, we had, it's been longer than that, it's probably.
Oh, you're talking about.
The fire with, when they burnt the mulch. Yeah, it's got rubber mulch out there and they set that on fire and it torches the swing.
At the park?
At the park.
The rubber, rubber burns, the rubber mulch burns? If they put gas on it?
Yeah. But it's hard to say if it happened with that, because that pipe's, you know, it's buried. It wouldn't have, the fire from on top wouldn't have gotten down into the pipe. They would have.
Probably happened during the same time.
They may have gone, they would have had to jump the fence and go under there and light the actual pipe on fire. But it's, it's hard to say exactly when it happened. So unfortunate, but like I said, we've had issues out there. It's gonna keep happening and really we need to address it with at least the lighting initially. And then I think security cameras ultimately would be a.
We've discussed this park at some of the park committee meetings, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Is this the ones where we can't keep the nets on the, on the backboards or the hoops?
I guess they originally had taken the nets down because of COVID. And then some had suggested just leave them down, 'cause that attracts people and, you know, the crime occurs 'cause they're playing in the park. I mean, well, that kinda is counter to the idea of having a park there, so. There's nets back up there now.
Okay.
But yes, we've had issues there and we're gonna work on ways to address it. Just wanted to let you all know that that had happened. It's a pretty big deal for that park and the fact that we're having to do all this extra work to, because of a unfortunate vandalism event that actually nobody knew exactly it had happened, so.
You don't have that much money in the park's budget anyway.
Right, and you know, this, this started out as, it's a stormwater pipe that collapsed. It's a street stormwater pipe, so it started out as that. Now it's getting into, okay, should it come out of parks to, you know, the parks budget to, to fix all this or street or a combination? So we gotta get it fixed now and then we'll sort all of those out.
Okay.
Over the next week or so.
I have a letter from the Mid-Missouri Public Housing Agency. And, uh, in 2010, the Boone County Public Housing Agency, the agency that administers the Section Eight Housing Choice voucher program, underwent a reorganization and name change. It is now the Mid-Missouri Public Housing Agency, serving Callaway, Cole, Cooper, Howard, Montauk, Osage Counties every since. And, uh, COVID has set us back, but they're re-establishing the board. Coal County seat is open. We have not had a commissioner from Coal County in several years. Would you be willing to appoint a new board member? So is anyone interested in going to Columbia and sitting on the Section Eight Housing Board?
Sam.
Huh?
I'd say.
Got me written all over.
Uh, I, I can't leave Coal County, I can't. My car at Boone, when I go into Boone County, the engine dies.
I'll do it, Sam. Put me down.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you, Eric.
As he giggles.
But they're talking, I think.
Well, we have to have somebody on there, it's just not one of the fun ones.
They meet four times a year. Here.
So do we need to write that up then to appoint Harry to that and then we can prove that in a?
Uh, put it on the next meeting? Yeah. Agenda on the next meeting.
And then, you know, if you can't make it or something sometime, then I'd say that one of us can be a backup to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanna see what happens when you cross the county line.
Oh, it just, I go into Osage County, we went to Osage County. We had a, we had a nice, nice commissioners meeting. Everybody knows Brian Voice.
Time out. Let's get this straight. Wait, you went there and I went there and I followed him there and he took me to the wrong place.
Well, I, I thought it was the Lions Club, it turned out it was the Knights of Columbus. But regardless of that, they, we had, we had fried chicken and ham, but, but no Gin Ricks.
He took me to a funeral, is where he took me. I mean, I followed him to a funeral.
I wanted him to pay his respects.
He goes in there and says, where's the Gin Ricks? And this lady says, we're fixing a meal for a funeral. Yes, I'm not making this up.
But they.
And, and by the way, we were in separate cars, so it wasn't, you know, it wasn't a commissioners meeting, so. But anyway, this guy led me in the wrong place.
We went back to Knights of Columbus and we had a, we had a great time. I had Dan Atwell from Boone County.
You can try to talk your way out of this, Sam, but.
It would have been fried chicken and ham, any that either, either was.
I'd just say that probably happy is in Wright County. Sometimes, you know, Sam gets going, you never know. He's got that Corvette, he just takes off.
No, we had the Lincoln.
Oh, okay.
And there was a muddy parking lot too.
He had the Lincoln, I had the F-150, so.
Is that Lincoln four-wheel drive?
That's all-wheel drive.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Wow. All right.
Okay.
We're tying up a lot of valuable people's valuable time here with, uh, so.
Had Brian, he wore a sport coat today, so. Do you wanna give an update on what you learned at Emmett's Bridge? Oh, John's got something?
No.
Oh.
I'm not working. You got a bad gearboard. Well, it's good. Give it a name.
Yeah, so.
Come to the table.
Yeah, I didn't know you had anything you wanted to talk about, Jerry, so.
I just have some comments.
Okay.
Just nothing earth-shattering or anything like that. I did type them up, so. You might not use all of them.
Good morning, uh, my name's Jerry Roslin. I live in Wardsville on Route B and, um, I would just like to give some comments on the bicycle signage. I think, um, so too often you hear, you don't hear from both sides. You, you heard obviously from the people for the signage, uh, but I think, um, you haven't heard the other side, you don't hear it enough, you know, and, and, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. But I think you accurately represented the opinion of your constituents. Um, I think, um, I wanna give positive feedback on this and I think that you did. But I, I think that you, you depict it how we feel and I believe that probably nine out of ten of the Coal County residents do not want those signs there. I'm a little bit more able to, to voice my opinion than you are. You're in a little more delicate position than, than I am. So I'm, I can be a little more critical of things and, uh, so that's what I'm here today to do. I kinda wanna give the perspective from the other side of the wheel. Uh, I think the, the lathered roads are basically twelve foot wide. Uh, the average width of the car is five foot. Uh, you add the mirrors on, now you're, you're around six foot four inches. A pickup truck, you know, is eighty inches without the mirrors. You add on another eighteen inches, so to speak, for some of these mirrors and now you've added, uh, you're at eight foot. I think a bike rider probably takes up about three foot of room from that lane. You add in the rumble strips now that we're adding on both sides of the road, you know, on the middle and the side of the road, that narrows it down just that much more. There's a yellow and white line and a department of revenue and especially my insurance company will tell you, as soon as I hit one of those lines, I am out of control of that vehicle. So the thought of moving around, uh, a rider sometimes, um, I'm breaking the law basically. And, and if there's an incident and I'm over that line, then I'm at fault. And a lot of times with a, with a bike rider, you are at fault. It seems to be that's the way that it falls. I just feel that, uh, some of these roads that they ride on are a little narrow. Uh, and, and if they don't have a shoulder, that just creates an extra hazard, not only for the rider, but also for the driver. I understand that they wanna ride on these roads, 'cause it's fun. You know, there's a lot of hills, so there's a lot of curves to it. Uh, it's not much fun riding on fifty-four, just straight, flat, you know, there's no fun to that. I get that. But, uh, this is our path to our homes, our farm, to work. We know how hazardous it can be in just the vehicle. Let alone you put a bicycle on that road, it just adds that much more of a degree of danger. There's various drivers on these roads. Uh, we have the elderly, we have young drivers. Now we're starting to see more foreign drivers and big trucks, you know, and, uh, they can barely speak English, let alone, you know, this is what they can do, you know, for a living. So it's a little tougher. It's a, it's a very hazardous situation. And I think all that played back into your decision, you know, on the signage and that, that you really, really don't think that that's gonna help. I think a lot of that needs to be, uh, that vehicle drivers feel that bike riders, it needs to go both ways. I understand that we wanna share the road, but I think it needs to be both ways. Uh, that the vehicles drivers need to be, you need to recognize those riders, but then the bike riders need to be, uh, just as cognizant of the vehicles as well. I feel putting up the signs probably would have put more of the burden on the, on the vehicle driver. And again, it all goes back to, you know, you need to share that, um, you need to share that responsibility between everybody. That's kinda my opinions. Uh, more than anything, I just wanted to reinforce that decision you made. I believe that the majority of your, uh, county residents would support that and I believe you're on the right path.
Thank you, Jerry. I've had a lot of people calling and echoing the same thing. Few of them that didn't like the, the idea, but they wanna, I guess, educate me on the bike rules, so.
I, I think in the future, these probably should go through traffic and safety, uh, concerning, whenever we do signage or things like that, but to me, the, the count of the traffic on, on Rock Ridge, you basically have got about three thousand cars a day and eighty-five percent of them are exceeding the speed limit by about ten miles an hour. So to me, it's, but anyway, this was just the one stretch of road, but I think, I think probably any future request probably ought to go through Traffic and Safety Committee, 'cause that's what it's for.
Yeah, I don't think it would have changed anything. And one of the bicyclists I talked to said, you know, we all have stories. They're going down Route C of all things, put the shoulder and somebody threw ice at them. You know, she's like, thank God it wasn't glass. I was like, no matter what signs we had up, it wasn't gonna change those idiots. And we can't change that. So the signage doesn't change people from being inattentive and texting and, I mean, the last, we all share the road. Last thing we wanna do is hit somebody or cause a death, you know, so.
I agree. I think it would have been a waste of funds that we could have used, you know, obviously in another place. I, I don't mean to beat a dead whatever, but, um, but I think you did the right thing. And I just wanted to reflect that to you because, you know, it's in the paper, you know, you're, you're, you don't hear both sides of it. And it's something as, as county residents, that we should come out and we should support you more in these meetings like this, uh, just so that you have that feedback on the record. more in these meetings like this, just so that you have that feedback on the record and, and here. So.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Roslin, for, for appearing. I just won't let the time go without saying the most enlightening thing to me about this event, and I'm not changing my vote, is that 80% of the vehicles on that road are exceeding the speed limit.
Eighty-five percent.
Okay, 85%. So bikers, you can't go there because 85% of the people want to break the law. That to me is illogical to, to punish the bikers, the bicyclists, I shouldn't call them bikers, the cyclists, because it's dangerous because 85% of people are exceeding the speed limit. And I understand the narrow road and all those other things. But unless you get on the bicycle in this community, you don't realize how hilly this community is. So these, these bicyclists have identified the loop and they're going to use the loop. And I think we should warn the public that, or alert the public that the loop is being used by cyclists. But that's where we'll leave it. But thank you for being here and giving your presentation.
I mean, we never said they couldn't use it or not to use it. We just said we're not going to put up signs. It is a safety issue. And David's words, it's a substandard road. If we put signs on every substandard road that they want to ride bikes on, we're going to have them everywhere. So.
Every road's not the loop though, Jeff. This is the loop. That's what, that's the difference.
Yeah. They can put the loop inside of Jefferson City and have their loop. So it's not really the JC loop when it gets out of JC, is it? So.
Carrie thinks so. Oh.
Well, she's appalled.
I'm sorry. Okay, anything else?
Did you want to say anything about your Emmitsburg trip?
He looks so much smarter. I could tell. He just, he learned so much.
So for the last two weeks, I've been in Emmitsburg, Maryland, attending the National Fire Academy, completing the management of emergency medical services courses. So through the course, I worked with 18 other public safety leaders from around the country, sharing ideas, learning how to handle modern or current events within our industry and those sorts of things. So if you're not familiar with, with the National Fire Academy, it is a cost sharing venture with FEMA. The travel, lodging and course instruction is provided via federal funds. And then our part is paying for the, the meal piece while, while staff are there. So I was the first to attend from our department. Three more leave Sunday to attend the same course. And then we have two more going to an incident management course later in April, I believe. So it's a great resource for us. It's great training. It's great networking. And it basically comes as a third of the cost for what other training of this caliber would be. So.
This one is just EMS focused?
Correct. EMS focused. So this part of, you know, these courses are listed as the National Fire Academy. So that is on the same campus as the Emergency Management Institute, which I believe most of you have attended. So that's the FEMA side.
I don't think Harry has. Yeah. I don't think Harry has either. So I'd, I'd like to, I'm assuming they probably closed down during COVID.
So, so yeah, all of, the campus is opening back up again. Again, it's, it's two sides. So you have the emergency management side, which is hosted by FEMA. And then you have the National Fire Academy side, which is hosted by the US Fire Administration. So.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty cool to see what all you go through and you put everybody in their own rooms. It kind of stinks being policymakers because you get to watch all them guys doing the work. So you just got to stay out of their way, which that's kind of the way it is in real life, you know. We get to make the decisions. Those guys are behind the scenes taking care of everybody. But.
I think it's a future time. I would like.
I'd see if they opened it back up. I think, I think you would enjoy it. So.
Yeah. And you got to go to Gettysburg and see my name on the building. So.
We did spend some time in Gettysburg. We spent some time down in DC as well. So.
Yeah.
Yep. Cool.
Okay. Anything else?
Good. All right. Make motion to stay in recess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.